Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And just so you all understand, and I'm going to repeat it to the rest of you, our venue here is to have a community club meeting to bring something of interest to the community such as we're doing tonight, having Commissioner Higginbotham here. Last month, we had the FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, here to talk about the extension of 301 and things like that. And I mention this because this is the only club, the only place in the community that you will have this. It's not provided for anyone by the PWA, by our property manager, by our lifestyle office. We're if, we need to do it for ourselves. So I want to welcome everyone again, thank you for your participation. Don't behave tonight, he's the one that will escort you. But he's got a few messages for you quickly, and then he'll introduce our commissioner.
Good evening. Some of our upcoming events that we're going to have is we're going to have Enstone talking about the ponds we have around Valencia Lake and the wildlife. We have also Brightway Insurance is going to give us information about insurances. A lot of people don't know about some of the insurance like sewer insurance backup. Those people don't know about that one, very cheap, but if your sewer backs up, you're not covered. We're going to have Bright House to explain the cable box and how the remote works. I had them out the other day, and I could not believe all the extra goodies on my remote that I got, and I never knew even existed. And I think a lot of people have the same problem as I do, maybe not, but you know, I thought it'd be good thing to learn. We're also going to have State Alarm come out and talk to us about the pin pads, not like the last time, if anybody went to the first one, they'd say, "State Alarm, the guy knew nothing what he was talking about." This one, we will. And we have also St. Joseph Hospital going to give us a talk. So that's what our agenda is for upcoming months. Now, I'm pleased to announce that we have Hillsborough County Commissioner, Mr. Al Higginbotham, give us a call.
Good evening. How are we doing in I.S.E.? We need to have some smiles in here, I thought walking in. I heard somebody say, "Well, we're going to find out what the county is going to do to us tonight." Well, you're part of this county, and it's exciting to see -- tell them I'll call later, wherever that's coming from. It's exciting to see so many people who will turn out on an evening when you could be out sitting in the rain and the humidity. But it's nice to see you here. For those of you who are not acquainted with me, I'm Al Higginbotham, fifth generation from Plant City. My wife and I will be married 34 years this August, and I may be joining the singles club if I keep this pace up. So she said, "Will you be ...?" And I have meetings every night this week, including Saturday night, but I don't typically schedule anything on Sunday. But I saw her in passing, and a couple of weeks ago, I went four nights, four days, without seeing Devin awake, or likewise. I was either out the door before she was up, or likewise, and then she was turned in, or I was turned in when she'd get up. But some of the questions that you asked are, or all of them are impressive, and I know they weren't quite as precise as they were April 12th, when I was here last, 2010, in a formal setting. A lot of you wonder, "What do I do when I'm not at home?" Back up about the home front just a minute. Devin and I have two children who are grown. Al, the third, lives in Mammoth Lakes, California, which is right outside of the eastern northeast entrance of Yosemite. He is an alpinist or a professional climber. Our daughter Kalen lives in Christchurch, New Zealand, and she originally went there for equestrian sports, and is just now about to finish her degree in geology from University of Canterbury. You know, moms and dads, we want our kids to be independent and self-confident, but not to the point that one climbs mountains for a living and the other moves halfway around the world. I don't know, when they finished schooling, they moved as far away as they could. I don't know if that has something to do with parenting. But a typical work week for me is 60, 70 hours. Charter allows for commissioners, and in many ways, treat this as a part-time job. I'm one of the two who don't have employment somewhere, and take this serious enough that I do it full-time. Last year, to give you some statistics, in briefing materials that I have to read and prepare for, and I have two aides who assist me, Ellie and Seth, and some of you have called in and probably spoken with my two aides, we had to read 30,000 pages of briefing material to get ready for our agenda meetings. I cast 618 votes in the official agenda meetings. That might not be a good thing, because then it really is a validity to, "What's our county going to do to us?" We handle, in constituent cases, 2,100 cases, and that could be anything from poor drainage to potholes to barking dog to noisy neighbor, or I've lost my job, where do I go? If you add up all the other commissioners on the second floor, there's seven of us, and compare our caseload to theirs, we're more than double all of them. And one of the reasons is that we take our job serious. We have developed a reputation of not being a place you call and get a number and pass off to someone else. We actually assign a case number to each inquiry and follow it through until it's complete. We may not get the answer that you want, but we'll find an answer and follow through, and if not, we have several litter open pending cases. But we work genuinely hard to respond. Outgoing phone calls, there was 5,500 outgoing phone calls, that was outgoing and incoming, and emails that the three of us answered last year, 25,000, and meetings that I held in my office, and that could be with a constituent or an advocacy group, or even a lobbyist who wants to come in. I had 267 meetings in my office. Meetings like this last year, I've got to double-check that because sometimes it's hard for me to believe, meetings I had, most of them in the district, 332 meetings I held in East Hillsborough County last year. Most of those I spoke at. In addition to that, last year, and not a travel, taxpayers' expense, I traveled to both China, India, to major markets in the country, back and forth to the west coast several times, one working on the ICA Bollywood venture, which some of you probably saw in the news, and then on economic development. The questions, and I've talked back and forth as we were getting kind of preparing, I'm just going to go through these questions, and then if there's questions that you have that we haven't answered that were pretty submitted, we'll answer those as well. I brought staff with me tonight. They're, most of them are from the county. They're the people that work every day, very hard. I know there's a lot of jokes, a lot of criticism about county folks, government folks, or slackers. You don't find that in the county. And you may be a bad egg here and there, but you find a lot of good people. And I'm going to ask the county staff people and all the staff people that are here tonight to answer your questions. If you would please, starting on my right, go down and just give us your name and which department you're with, and then we'll start into the question.
My name's Tina Russo, I'm with the Parks Department. I'm here to answer questions concerning the south coast greenway.
Good evening, George Cassidy, I'm with the Public Utilities Department. I'm the department director, and the Public Utilities Department provides water, wastewater, and reclaiming water services to most of the unincorporated residents of the county.
Good evening, my name's Jerry Campbell, I'm with the Environmental Protection Commission. I work in the air quality division, and I've been asked to appear tonight to help respond any questions about noise issues, particularly with regard to US 301.
Good evening, I'm John Healy, I'm with the Development Services Department. You typically interact with us if you're just something, like have questions on zonings, those types of items. We also do work in the site plan approvals and reviews.
Good evening, I'm Mike Williams with the Public Works Department, and I'm here to answer questions about transportation and drainage.
I'm Christina Bono, I was here with you about a month ago on your night, so I'm glad I'm supposed to be back.
Hi, my name is Todd Wagner, I'm with Florida Department of Transportation and Project Development and Environment. I'm an environmental scientist with Cultural Resources, a noise specialist.
Hi, I'm Amy Drew Nelson, I'm the Interstate Program Manager for the Department of Transportation.
You have a room full of people with good questions, and staff in the state and the county, who are areas knowledgeable and experts to answer these questions. And I'm Al Higginbotham, the county commissioner, and if you're here for dancing class, I'm not your instructor. The first question is related to the backflow preventer devices, and that's going to go down here to my right.
So I think the question on backflow was, there are some rule changes that have just been promulgated by the state on what happens to backflow prevention. And for those of you that don't know, for those of you in Valencia Lakes, you've got a copper tube piping apparatus that sits in the burnt yarn. That apparatus prevents anything in your house from backing up into the drinking water supply system. These backflow devices are common for anyone that has a secondary irrigation source, and I believe there's a common irrigation source that's supposed to be separate from portable water source. Now, the question comes, the state has recently changed its rules on how it looks at these backflow prevention devices. In the past, you really didn't have too many degrees of freedom. If you had an irrigation system, you had to have backflow preventer of a certain make and a certain model. And so, in years past, we developed, Hillsborough County developed, a backflow prevention ordinance that's been in place for a number of years, and it pretty detailed, it's pretty prescribed that if you have this, then this is what you've got to have as a protection device. The changes in the state statutes require now that not only do people with secondary water supplies or irrigation systems have to have backflow, but everybody on a public water supply system has to have some degree of backflow prevention. And so, we're just now beginning to look at the ordinance changes or the statute changes that drive what we may do with our ordinance. It looks like there may be some opportunities to modify our existing ordinances. Maybe there's a possibility, if the board chooses to support this, we may get away in some cases from this above-ground feature, and we may look at some options that allow us to go underground with the meters. As you know, your water meter is underground. We may be able to put a device underground as well. We're kind of a long way away from that happening right now. We've still got to review the statute, we've got to look at it and compare it to what's in place in our ordinance. We've got to make some recommendations to the board, and the board's got to support it. So I'm here to tell you right now, we're probably at least six months to a year away from being able to look at what can be done, but we will be looking at it. You're in a lot better position today than you were a couple of years ago for that device that's above ground.
And that is a result of hearing from not only you folks here, but all through the county, who does not care for this state mandate and this unsightly backflow device that skips out in front yards. So we're providing ways, and we'll pursue that avenue to make it more timely and comply with state law. But this, again, is a state requirement that comes from Tallahassee, and not from the county commission, in my preference, it would be not to happen. But we're taking steps, and it's frustrating that, it takes time, but we have been at it. Mr. Brown down in Sun City Center, and I've worked together for quite a few years, and we're coming up with some solutions. The next question is on the south coast greenway. I can invite --
The south coast greenway has been a trail planned in the south county since about 2007. It's a multi-phase plan. The first phase is actually from College Avenue to 19. It's at 60% design, we're very excited, they're at 60% design, and will be completed at 100% design, ready for construction by the end of this year. We just submitted an application to DOT to fund that first phase of the trail. The second phase, and I brought a map, the second phase is basically from 19 up to Big Bend, which will be in the development of Waterset, and that development is planning to build that trail. Actually, part of it's already built within the development. And then the third phase, which is probably the phase that we're most excited about, is north from Waterset all the way up to Sims Road, and we're working on that in a design-build situation. But we're at 60% for that first phase, which is just a little bit west of here. That follows basically on the east side of the HCC and goes all the way down to College Avenue. It's a paved, plowed foot trail, which is used for hiking and biking. It's an alternative transportation path is what it is. And with the school there and everything, it will provide a way for people who want and bike to facilities as the school and to and from work.
Next question that we had, that we received, is on the, it says a sound study. I know that I think it should be a study on sound, we've done in 2006, when it was more open space here, and what's the status at this point? And Jerry?
The Environmental Protection Commission does regulate noise. However, there are certain types of noise that are exempt from our rule. And one of them is traffic noise. And the reason for that, when you think about it from a practical sense, our agency, the employees are in civilian clothes, we don't have lights on the top of our car to stop people. So from that perspective, we really are not equipped to try to run people down with boom boxes. And when it comes to roadways, the state legislature said there are certain things that we don't want local governments to regulate, and that one of those is noise roadways. So we're specifically exempt from regulating noise from state roadways. However, what we've done is, it's not uncommon for somebody to be concerned about noise and call our agency, because we see hundreds of calls every year about noise, and we investigate each and every one of them, even if it would appear that what they're complaining about may be exempt from the rule. And in this case, even though DOT does not have to follow our rules, they are very, very cooperative. And so what we normally do is we contact them, we tell them about a citizen concern, about a roadway, or sometimes it's a state construction project, expanding a roadway, just the construction activity, and they try to work with us, work with the citizens to try to get them some sort of relief. So they've been very cooperative through that. Now, the question, my understanding of concern here is that 301, which one's immediately in front of the subdivision, is due to be expanded, and was there a noise study done? Well, DOT, from our agency's perspective, we don't regulate them, but we did take a look at the study that they did, just to make sure that they followed all the procedures that there are required under their own set of rules. We reviewed that, and we found that in fact, they did follow, it appears to us, they did follow all their procedures. That any building or structure which was not built or permitted before the date of public notice, which was for them, for this project, June 23rd, 1987, was not considered in the study. However, I did notice when I drove in here that you do have a nice berm which runs adjacent to the roadway. So it appears to me that the developer understood what was going to happen, and he did put in a pretty good noise barrier along 301 for you. Now, whether or not there needs to be enhancements to that or not, that I can't say, but it does appear to me there is some noise-abating procedures in place. Now, DOT, I've talked to DOT folks, they're very cooperative, like I said, but they do not have any grounds for conducting another noise study. And there's not really any evidence either if they did another noise study, whether they would build or add on to the existing berm that's out there right now. So from that standpoint, now what can our agency do for you? Our agency responds to complaints, and we monitor noise, we're very good at that. We do not do predictive studies, so we don't have the software, the sophisticated software which will predict what a roadway will look like 20 years from now. That's what DOT does with their studies. So that's a worst-case noise, and they've looked at that. But what we can do for you, and we've done this before, is we've gone into communities where they have a concern about roadway, and we've set up our monitors, and we'll record the noise for you. We'll then make that information available to you, so that you would have an idea of what noise levels you're looking at in your community. That information cannot necessarily be turned over to DOT to make them change or make them do a noise study, but it certainly gives you more information as to what levels you're looking at. We've done that sort of work up in the New Tampa area, and again, what it would give you is our noise technicians would come out, and they would set up at a discreet location, and they would tell you what the noise is for that one hour, for that one day they were there. Now, the traffic may have been heavier or lighter that day, and the meteorology also affects the readings. So what we try to do is we try to find out from the residents, what are the worst case? Is it the noisiest? And then we look at the meteorology and try to capture the highest noise levels. Now, we would turn that information over to you, and what you wanted to do with that in your association, that would be up to you, whether you wanted to go back to your developer, or to somebody else to maybe look at further noise abatement if you felt it was warranted. Yes?
What about the added fumes from the trucks?
There will be, I mean--
Repeat the question.
Her question was, "What about the additional fumes from trucks?" And anytime you increase the traffic, automobiles obviously are a source of air pollution. We monitor, we have about a dozen or so monitoring stations spread throughout the county. We do monitor next to some of the busiest roadways. And because of the advancement in the automobiles and the trucks and the new gasoline and the fuels, we've found that even on the busiest roadways, far more heavier traffic than what you have now, or what you would anticipate on US 301, that those levels are safe.
Why don't you comment on the report that you filed recently with EPC, the Environmental Protection Commission, that's at the county level, on the air quality and how we're compared to 10 or 15 years ago?
Yes, the air quality in this county, because of the advancements of the US EPA, because of the historic cleanup in Tampa Electric, they converted one of their own coal-fired power plants in Gannett, they converted it to gas, is now referred to as the baside station converting natural gas out there. The advancements in the automobiles that are being manufactured, the fuels, we've seen the levels across the board for all the clubs that we monitor in Hillsborough County, have the air quality's been getting better. Now, in some cases, the scientific community and the medical community, which revisits all the air quality standards every five years, sometimes they look at the new health studies and they say, "You know what, the old standard wasn't tight enough, we need to tighten it." So there are some cases where even though the air quality is improving, it's not improving as fast as the standards. EPA, US EPA is lowering the standards. But the air quality in this area is certainly much better off than it was 10 or 15 years ago.
And how are we comparing to metropolitan areas in the country?
The Tampa Bay area is really blessed. We are, given that we have over a million people in this county, several million people in the Tampa Bay area, we have 20% of the heavy industry in the whole state of Florida in this area. Considering all that mix, the air quality here compared to some of the other metropolitan areas such as Houston or California, even some of the places up in the northeast, we're going much better.
Thank you. Next question, I've known, what's the time schedule for the extension of 19th Avenue east of 301? Will need the mic down here?
Okay, the extension of 19th Avenue. The extension is a requirement of the developer for the Valencia Lakes GL homes, and it's really going to depend on the pace or the rate which they develop the property come to the north of where we are that's still vacant. So we don't have a definitive timeline at this point, and it really depends on how quickly they sell home.
I'm looking for hands to follow the question, don't see any. All right, we understand. Okay, sorry.
When am I putting the trash light on on 19th Avenue?
That's the next question. And I assure you that she and I did not speak for the meeting. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Is there a percentage of homes sold when that extension will begin?
There's not a specific percentage or number, but to access that property to the north, there'll be access and then off of 19th Avenue, so go ahead and start building 19th Avenue, just to be able to access that property.
The extension of 19th Avenue will be a public road or will be a part of the road?
The question was, will it be a public or a private route?
Yep, it'll be a public route.
So it will be open access to the county?
Yes, and it'll be county maintained. Presumably, you know, the community to the north, and then any connection to the south will be gated, as the rest of this community is. Okay, you'll be next, over here first.
Valencia Lakes is south of the proposed 19th extension. Are you talking about not anything happening until the property GL owns north? That perspective, though, is developed?
Yeah, the question was, Valencia Lakes as it is today is all south of where 19th Avenue would be, and yes, it'll most likely come when the property to the north starts developing, the extension from that is.
Excuse me. Will 19th Avenue connect to Westlake or will it dead-end?
The question was, will it extend all the way over to Westlake, or will it just dead-end? And on the development plan and in the long-range plan, it's supposed to connect it all the way to Westlake, so yes, it will connect.
What is the timeline that the developer has to submit engineering plans to do in time of year implementation? Because according to comments that we've been told, they plan on developing things with a golf cart jet to Walmart. No one in the sales office, or within the, or KDA engineering seem to know that, but supposedly you're coming to the county, but the county needs to have that, and who do we go to? So that is the beginning.
Well, the question for this in here was about, essentially about the timeline for when they would have to do their engineering and all for the development of the property. I guess that's really up to the developer, and what I mean by that is, certainly it takes, it could take several months, six months or more for them to do all the engineering. But it really depends on the timeline of when they want to develop that portion of the property. Meaning, they could come forward and do their engineering now, get approval of their engineering, but if they're not ready to develop that part of the property, they won't move forward with that part of the property.
So they can do a piecemeal as they see the need and certainty, and it has nothing to do with getting permission from the, they can say, "Tell them..."
You're talking about piecemealing 19th Avenue, or piecemealing the entire--
No, the parcel that's behind the church, real one going towards Walmart.
Certainly. Well, let me, maybe let me clarify. The property I'm talking about, which is all part of Valencia Lakes, the overall larger part, this property I'm talking about is the stuff north of where 19th Avenue will come through. I think if I misunderstood, or maybe what the gentleman here talked about, that's south of 19th Avenue, where you're talking about, what you mentioned.
But it's still part of the planning and zoning and getting permission from, assuming the county and that we're in there before those work, and I don't know the processes for that.
Yeah, any of the work, any of the work that they do has an approval process, or a process to ensure that the engineering is done properly, that the construction is done properly. So if there's a golf cart path, or any of the other roads, or sidewalks that are proposed within this entire subdivision, or anywhere in the county for that matter, yes, it comes through, there's a site plan approval process that's in the Development Services Department. Specifically, that part of the process is in the Development Review section. The Development Review section gets plans, works with it, first of all, works with the engineers and gets plans from the developers, and then they work with them to ensure that appropriate facilities are constructed at the proper time. So I don't know if that answered your question.
I'm just looking for the timeline, when they submit and when you approve, and how much time do they have to have in terms of those two.
If their plans are, if they do a good job on their plans, their plans could be approved within a few months. From that point, they generally have up to two years to construct the project, but then they can get extensions per state statute. It's really on the developer's time.
I see some head shaking, no, or we, do you understand the time process?
I think so. No, you would have to--
Because I don't want to rush through it here. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you require official notifications, or do you conduct hearings once the agreement is submitted?
Short answer is no. Well, let me repeat the question. Your question is, are there notifications required to the community-- The question is, are, are there notifications required to the community, um, or that sort of thing? And the short answer is no.
What about hearings?
There were public hearings done, uh, when the property was rezoned in front of the board. Actually, the community, they're doing a, um, a small change to their zoning that will be, that they've just filed recently, and that'll be going to the board.
August twelfth.
August twelfth, very good, thank you. But I think that's just to remove an access point that currently showing the plan of 301, so it's just a minor change.
I, I want to think, um, I was recently in the sales office and looking at the new map that we expand, and someone in the sales office mentioned to me that all future Valencia Lake development will be south, and then when Nineteenth goes through, they will still have to move for approximately five hundred home community that will not be Valencia Lakes between here and Nineteenth.
Well, if, if they choose to call it something else, um, you know, that really, we don't control that.
No, I understand.
And, and, no, I mean, I understand the question.
Just trying to clarify that Valencia Lakes is not going to go to, as I was told recently, that it is not going to go all the way to Nineteenth Avenue.
That, that may be just for, for benefit, the, the statement was that the sales office told this gentleman that Valencia Lakes, the name Valencia Lakes, the community that stopped at Nineteenth Avenue-
Before Nineteenth Avenue.
Or before Nineteenth Avenue. And then if they develop on the other side of Nineteenth, which they will probably at some point, it will most likely be called something else or be a different community.
All right, the next question that I received was, we understand from FDOT the traffic signals will be installed at intersection 301 and Nineteenth? That'll be an FDOT, Mike, can you handle that, FDOT?
I'll go ahead and try.
Okay.
Because we, believe it or not, we talk to DOT occasionally. My understanding from, from the department people is that, um, the contract or a design build contract for the signal is then awarded or is underway, and the signal should be in place by January of two thousand fifteen. February, I'm sorry, February.
Mike, closer, Jim. Uh, again, my name is John Gilliam from the Development Services Department, and South County's got, as you well know, a lot of economic activity going on, a lot of development. And while the question is pretty expansive, I've addressed a few of them that I'm able to find out prior to me, but however, I will also be here. If you have a specific property you want to know, I'll take your name, I'll look it up, and I'll get back if you make sure that you get the answer that you need. Uh, there's a number of small, uh, activities, uh, construction activities, including a dental office, PDQ restaurant, like this convenience store some time ago, a Dairy Queen and a grocery store, the name of which you might want me to say, but other might not want me to say, but it's going to be grocery store, it's Walmart grocery store.
Wawa.
Wawa.
Wawa, wawa.
Um, there may be a wawa, they got on that one, the shore screaming up everywhere. Again, if, if you have a specific property that you would like me to speak to, uh, I'd be happy. I'll, if I don't know the answer, I'll find it out. Yes, sir?
We've been hearing for a long time, this is for a huge mall on Big Ben, we'll have a movie theater.
And that's one of the-
You know anything about this?
And he and I did not speak before the meeting, and that's a question that's coming up, and well, I'll answer that now. And I can take it out of order.
That mall, essentially when the, uh, economy crashed, it pretty much went dark. So it certainly has the approvals for enough square footage to construct the mall. They have specific entitlements and obligations, but the developer that was there at the time has left, uh, the folks that owned and financed the property still own and finance it. Uh, so their planned development has not changed, but we simply haven't heard anything from them.
And, but it is still on the books, but until the, the market, and they refer to it as rooftops, until they see the number of rooftops for the economy coming back, and the economy's coming back, you'll see the mall there, but it came to a screeching halt like so many projects did. But yes, sir, there are movie theaters, uh, and there are going to be some upscale stores, and the design that I had seen, uh, it was preliminary, it was similar to the mall that's in Lakeland, this kind of the outdoor theme mall, it's not one that's totally more of a, of a, a village center or like you see over in, um, West Chase, but that's the type of configuration, and that's why it's on the, on the books with its zoning approvals. But the, the market's got to catch up for that one to come, come first.
Yes, sir?
You, you mentioned rooftops, do you have projections for a southbound population growth?
Um, I could possibly have, be one of the staff, I don't, off the top of my head, that's-
I can, I can get the, you know, if, if, I'll stay here after, if you would just go up to me. I'll give you my card, I'll contact you, I'll get you the information.
Next question, uh, for several years, okay, we just answered that one, that was the next question? Uh, an entrance, uh, and or exit on Nineteenth, is an entrance, uh, on, and or exit on Nineteenth Avenue planned for I-75? I think that's kind of county and FDOT.
Hi again, um, as of right now, no, we do not have to plan the exits on I-75 on Nineteenth Avenue directly, and we don't foresee any of this coming.
There's a lot of speculation in the community, and people bring that up from time to time, and they say, oh, they're going to put an interchange here, and it's going to, depending on who you speak to, it's either going to be good or bad, but, um, uh, that's always been speculation. And, uh, there might be a developer who says, well, I'd like to, I have a, a concept of something, but there's no plan with the county or with the state or, uh, for such an interchange at this point. The next question, yes, ma'am?
Well, what about YD?
Okay, so reconfiguration of the exit ramp in Big Ben? Does FDOT have a question?
Apparently we have a study, it's a PNE, it's a, just a planning study. There's nothing funded for modifying that interchange at this time. And the PNE study is, was developed actually for I-75, but as far as YD or making improvements in that area, that's not a big one that we have currently funded for design or for construction.
Yes, ma'am?
Can you, can you give an explanation of what changes are being made to that southern entrance? Exit, why is it being modified, and what is the modification? It's no longer going to exist?
The exit that you're referring to, the south is the main entrance on 301 right now, and the developer has come in and applied to remove that exit. Stated reason for that is that it was going to be gated and prefer to have the access-
Oh, you're my closer.
Currently where it's gated right now, and they also want to have more internal access onto the internal roadways rather than going back out to 301. So that's the current request, it's under review, as the gentleman said, in August, from the application.
There won't even be an exit from Valencia Lakes there?
At the point they're talking about, they're just removing it entirely, correct.
And that's a, a request by the developer?
That's correct, that's the developer's application.
Which developer is this?
That's, uh, GL Homes, I believe.
All right, and one of the reasons that I bring Sam, is many of these questions, daily operation, the technical ones, come to staff months, if not years, before they reach the commission level. And I thought it was, uh, more efficient, efficient and effective and courteous with time to win into these questions to have staff here to, uh, make sure we get you some answers. Now, the next, the next, good luck. The next question, uh, the city of Tampa in the past granted certain parking considerations for vehicles with handicap tags or placards. Do you think I use one? For those of you who don't know why I'm on crutches, nineteen years ago, uh, I was farming, and I'd taken some clients on a hunting trip, does he, do, do you know why I'm on crutches? Do you want to hear? Uh, nineteen years ago, I'd taken some clients of mine on a hunting trip in Uvalo, Alabama, and, uh, we were deer hunting, and we did what deer hunters do in the morning. I don't want to turn your stomach, but, you know, we shot two deer, and we brought them back to our, our camp, it was a little shack in the woods, and, uh, we hung them in what we call the skinning tree to clean the deer. Well, this was a tree that we had used for at least ten years. Unknowing to any one of us, that tree that looked sound and solid on the outside was rotten on the inside, and in an instant, that tree broke, and it came across my shoulder, and it literally crushed me. When they called my wife Devon, uh, they said, if Al lives through the weekend, he'll never walk again. Well, miracles still happen and prayers are still answered, this is not an illusion. Uh, some expressions, maybe there is a dead man talking up here, but, but, um, you know, it took three years to learn to walk, and, uh, life is good. I've learned to do things differently, I have an excuse to get out of things I don't want to do. And, uh, you know, I bought my wife a new riding mower, and I'm glad that she can. But, and although I'm, I'm recovering from a stress fracture on, uh, left leg, and I'm moving a little slower than normal, uh, I went back to my passion of climbing. And some of you probably followed in the media, in two, August of two thousand twelve, I climbed White Mountain, which is, it is a fourteener, uh, fourteen thousand foot mountain. No chance. I'm sorry.
It's in New Hampshire too.
There isn't, that's exactly right. Uh, and actually, and this one's in the Sierra Nevada, but I was first person with a disability to summit the mountain, and would have climbed, uh, Mount Whitney, which is the highest mountain in the lower forty-eight, uh, last summer, but the fires in Yosemite, we had to wave it off because of all things air quality. Um, but, uh, it was fires and air quality, but, uh, but it was just a freak accident, nobody did anything wrong, but it was my day for things to, uh, to, uh, move in a different direction. And I will tell you that it was the best day of my life, because it allowed me to change some things that weren't right. I had a great marriage and had good kids and, you know, participated in the community, but there were some things that I needed to refocus on. And I'm in better physical shape today than I was nineteen years ago. But, your question, we've got the placards. Tampa complies with federal regulations of eighty-eight, and, uh, you, you can, uh, put your placard up, you need to put the placard up, and if you go to one of the little kiosks, you have an option in Tampa that is one, one or two, you buy a ticket, and when you get down there, it'll give you an option, uh, pay or disable, hit the disable button, and then you'll get a little ticket, hold on to the ticket, and, uh, you park there like you do anywhere else. A little known, uh, fact on parking at airports, do you know that you can, if you have hand controls or a wheelchair or, uh, walking assistent devices, uh, you can park at airports for free? Anybody know that? Absolutely, and, uh, yeah, when I'm traveling, I typically park at short-term parking, because it's difficult for me to get around, and when I travel long distances, I use my wheelchair. But, uh, they will ask you when you go out, uh, to see if either hand controls are proof that, uh, you're disabled, it's not for, uh, the temporary placards don't work, uh, they don't recognize a disabled permit for heart condition, but it's for mobility impair, but, uh, something that I've used all around the country. Is there, are there any plans for general reappraisal of property within the county? And that's actually a question that would come from the property appraiser, but there are no plans on the books that I'm aware of for, uh, reassessing properties other than the annual, the reassessment that takes place routinely. Just looking to see if there are any follow-up questions. Why mom is part of the unincorporated, uh, was involved in incorporating, and what might be a good reason for doing so? I don't think you want to do that. Your taxes would go up, you would be responsible for police and fire. Uh, you would have to, in all likelihood, in the short term, contract with Hillsborough Sheriff or, uh, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue until you could raise your taxes to a point that you could self-pun. Did I answer your question? County responsibilities. I went back and read the, the oldest set of recorded minutes from Hillsborough County, County Commission meeting, and it was about a hundred and ten years old, and they were handwritten. And there were a group of citizens who were down there, and they were, um, hasn't changed, they were upset about taxes and the condition of the roads, and this was in the, uh, the late eighteen hundreds. And they were so mad with the answers from the, the local commissioners that after the, uh, county commission meeting, they burnt down the building. But, you know, the issue, our issues are to set millage, and I don't know if anyone knows, but for the last twenty-one years now, Hillsborough County has lowered the military rate every year. We're the only county in the US, in the state, and probably one of the few in the US that has lowered the, the military, uh, every year. Now, it is sometimes small, but when you add it up over the last twenty years, it's significant. I don't like paying property taxes any more than anybody else, but there is a cost for fire and rescue and other programs and services. Main responsibilities in, in the beginning were, uh, building the bridges and building roads and the maintenance thereof, and that through the years and philosophy developed into social services. So you've got everything from, uh, aging services to, uh, different social service programs. We were in the after-school, uh, kid care program for a number of years, and, uh, that was, during budget cuts, that was one that I took a lot of heat on, because I brought it into that. Because what we were doing with kid care, for example, after-school kid care, um, was, we were going to the schools, picking them up, and then taking them to a county rec center, and then having recreation, giving them a snack, and then a little educational time. Schools should have been doing that. And we sat out in the school and found that the same kids that we were picking up and taking, uh, in, in county, in packs, air, packed air, uh, transportation, we could deliver the same service right there at the school, it was safer for the kids. And, uh, very controversial when we were going through it, because Higginbotham was going to throw all these children out on the street, and all I wanted to do was enable us to use those funds for transportation and extra staff to get more kids in the program. And what's happened is there are now more kids that are able to, whose moms and dads work, uh, they don't have a place to go after school until five o'clock, and their moms and dads pick them up. They stay at school. Uh, so there's an example of, of social services. Questions? I don't know, the question was, are we understaffed, what are we going to do about it with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Law enforcement? First, our crime has been dropping, uh, but if you're a victim of a crime, that doesn't matter. Uh, but the sheriff and their budget management programs, earning anywhere from, uh, one to three million dollars a year at the end of the year, can understand money. And my preference is that they retain those unused funds and build up the staff. I cannot remember off the top of my head, and yet commissioner's not smarter than a fifth grader, but I can't remember what that number is, but, uh, the sheriff, the deputies here are spreading it, but they're doing a doggone good job. Sheriff, his background was in, uh, finance, uh, when he originally, his undergraduate degree was financing, he's a budget wizard, and he's a great guy. I don't know if you ever have him or some of these folks out here for a meeting, but, uh, you ought to invite him and talk to him about that. But, uh, I would, I would readily say keep, you know, keep the funds that you return and, uh, build up, build the staff up. Yes, sir?
You do not have jurisdiction over, uh, the sheriff's-
Yes, sir, we don't.
-department of law enforcement. Can you tell us who does in the county or is that at the state level?
They are constitutional officers and are responsible for governing, governing themselves, and as far as who they would, uh, answer to up the ladder, uh, it would be to the Attorney General in Florida FDLE. Uh, but, uh, if we were, if a sheriff, and this happened recently in Pasco County, where the sheriff made a budget request, uh, and this is backed up by statute, uh, and the county commission denied their budget request, they can appeal it at the, the state level. And I don't know of any case where the sheriff didn't win. Next question. This was on back flows, uh, we've answered that. What are they building on Sun City Road east of 301 on south, on the south side? What are they building on Sun City Road east of three oh one on the south side?
On the southeast quadrant of Sun City Boulevard, three oh one, there is a large residential subdivision planned for that area. So you may be seeing some preparation, ground preparations, they start initiating their development of that area. But it's a sizable residential subdivision now.
Do they build all of their, or partial?
They're single-family homes, but they do have an option to build some multi-family units. As far as I know right now, it's single-family units, and there are several thousand homes that are approved down there.
Is that government-controlled housing?
Not to my knowledge.
Yes, sir.
Is there a county requirement for a second swimming pool when a development reaches a certain size?
Go ahead. But there are requirements for dancing. Yes, sir.
Do you know the developer of that new residential area?
The residential area?
On three oh one in Sun City Center.
There are two developers that are operating in that area. One is Lennar, the other is Metro.
Did I see another hand over here? I don't want to rush. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if a Wawa is coming?
Sir, you see, in the white shirt, does she always ask a lot of questions? Is there a Wawa plant?
I understand there's one in the area. Take a driver out of the lot, tell him when we get back.
And then the last question I have is on a PRS fourteen dash oh seven eight one, and this is a pending rezoning?
Yes, Commissioner, this is what we had talked about, where the applicant for Valencia Lakes jail homes is proposing to move that single access on three oh one.
Yes, ma'am? I'm not going to pick on you.
I understand that some residents received a letter about zoning hearing relevant to a change in numbers. Can you tell us where and when that hearing will be, because none of them was informed?
The application that we have has one change that is proposed, which is relative to that concerns that access point. I am unaware of any applications coming to affect the number of units or anything like that approved, but I just don't know many applications.
And that application would go to him or to the department?
Is there any reason, some people have letters being about that, letters in it?
The notice requirements are distance-specific, for example, at three hundred feet. So if you were three hundred and one feet, you probably didn't get one, but within three hundred feet, those ones got it. So it hasn't been required distance for notification.
We got one for removal of the exit down south of three oh one. And if you read the want ads in the morning newspaper, you will see where our hearing for August twelfth by GL Homes was already listed in the want ads. And the development east of three oh one, south of six seventy-four, their hearing is also August twelfth, and it was listed in today's want ad.
And is that satisfactory?
Pardon?
Is that satisfactory?
It is for me. It lets the public know what's going on in the community.
Okay.
Where the laser is being?
The areas are always at the campus center downtown, secondary.
And if you call me on rezonings, I, because I sit, not only myself, but all the commissioners, we sit in a quasi-judicial, well, as a quasi-judicial board, we will not be able to talk to you about it. We talk to county staff, but anything that is outside of the record, and that record's compiled by staff and by public hearings and is submitted, but it's frustrating for people, the public and for me, when someone says, "Well, what's going on with a particular rezoning? Anything that would be outside the record that's been submitted, you can't talk about." So it's not that I don't want to answer, but it's very frustrating. What other questions do you have? That was all we have on our list. Have you got anything else? Yes, sir.
Just a question on the ferry from Apollo Beach, is that moving ahead, or what's your thought on that?
The question was about the ferry, is it moving forward, the ferry project? The agreement that the board approved back in February is really a three-phase agreement. The first phase was a condition precedent, or kind of like a due diligence phase. The second phase would be design and permitting, and the third phase would be construction and operations. We are nearing the end of the first phase, that due diligence phase, just to make sure that the project is doable and feasible and viable. At some point in the next, in the near future, we'll probably be recording to the board about the status of the due diligence phase, or what we found in the due diligence phase, and then what the costs are for the next phase. And then we'll probably talk a little bit about the last construction phase costs as well, but really, we're mostly focused on the next phase.
And to add into that, we're gathering information to see how viable it is, all this will have to be presented to the Department of Defense as to whether we will be able to use a dill as a ferry post. I don't think that's ever going to happen, but we have to get to that point to ask that question. But I don't think because of national security issues that we'll ever get a launch for it. I saw a hand, Gavin.
Yes, sir. The time that King Engineering sent out a letter about the change in the access point, some of our neighbors received letters concerning a change in the flood zone. Does anyone know anything about that?
You got me flat-fitting on that one. We're going to have to follow up on a change in the flood zone now.
Richard, did you receive a letter?
If you could get a copy to my office tomorrow, scan it, we'll get you an answer. Yes, sir.
Just a curiosity question, because I knew here, but I was listening to your quality report, and I heard it is much improving. And compared to others, it is good, but what I didn't hear is, how good is the air here? What is the part that I didn't hear regarding quality?
And take your horn on this, and talk about the quality of the water that they dwell.
Hi, yeah. With regard to air quality, specifically in this area, I mentioned that the air quality has improved over the last twenty or thirty years dramatically, and that's because of the power plants being cleaned up and the automobiles being cleaned up. So the question is, what areas do we need help in? We do have a couple hotspots. We have an aggressive monitoring program, and we've found some localized spots where the air quality is not meeting standards, and we have the responsible parties actually addressing that and cleaning it up. With regard to, in a bigger scale, how are we looking? The air quality, probably the most prevalent problem we've had in this area is ozone, and that's ground-level ozone. Ozone high up in the stratosphere is not an issue, and that's actually helpful, but it's ozone down at the ground level. We probably have two to three days a year where we will have to issue advisory, and that's where we watch the monitors, and it's an eight-hour average, about three or four hours into it, the higher numbers, we say, "Look, the average over the next eight hours is not going to be good," so we issue advisory. And we actually have a system. We put out the advisory through the media, we notify the school board, and really what it's for, we're people who have pre-existing respiratory conditions, the elderly, the very young, they may want to adjust their schedule, they may not want to go out and exercise extrêmously outdoors in that heat. So we issue those probably two or three a year. Other areas of the country, if you're in Houston or if you're in California, and some places up in the Northeast, it's much more common, they have newer days every year. So one of the things that we're trying to do better is to get the word out to the public, is we're trying to use social media, and, you know, my kids look at me like I'm a dinosaur, because I really don't understand it all that well, but it is very effective. And we started using it at the agency, we have a program, and what I'll do is, I'll promise I'll send it to your program chair. It's a program where you can actually get hooked in, you get the advisories on your phone, and it does work. I mean, I'm in the agency where we issue them, but it's pretty neat when you issue them, and then you turn around, look at your phone, and there it is, it's telling.
I learned something right now. I didn't know I could do that one.
Yes, you can, sir. And that is something we're trying to do a better job of getting that out to the public. So with regard to water quality, the Tampa Bay area, I mentioned there's several million people living in this area, we've got twenty percent of the industry in the state of Florida. We're blessed to have a deep-water port, which is very vital to the economy here, but we also are very, very blessed in that we have absolutely pristine estuary. And through the cooperation of local governments, they have turned that around. In the nineteen fifties, most of the seagrasses, which is where the small fish and everything breed, and you allow all the commercial fishing to work off of that, that was disappearing. But over the last twenty years or so, they have turned back dramatically, there's been a dramatic increase in the return of the seabeds and the grass areas where the fish and juvenile fish can spawn, and the Tampa Bay estuary program, our agency, the county, the municipalities have all worked together, and it's actually unlawful for the country. So you should be very, very proud of the Tampa Bay, it is definitely.
And what's happening to the clam beds?
I'm not specifically sure about clam beds, but...
They're coming back.
They're coming back. So anybody that's on the water probably has more knowledge of that all the time, but certainly it is, it's a success story.
And I see several hands, but the gentleman from White Mountain knew, the other White Mountain.
I just wanted to ask your opinion. It's been followed in the last few days in the paper, there's been a big thing about the cruise.
About what?
The cruise ports. Cruise ships that are either moving the cruise port the other side of the bridge, or raising the bridge, or the bridge larger ships in.
All right.
What's your personal, I know that it is, if I remember correctly, the cruise port brings in over three hundred million dollars a year in business of the cruise industry to the county or the area, and I was wondering what your personal opinion is on that.
All right, and these other hands, I'm not ignoring the other hands, were they related to the air quality? Yes. Okay. Can I come to you? Okay, I'll come back to you. Let's get to the air quality answers for Jerry, and I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I have a question. On control burns, do you, are they supposed to notify the communities that are, when they have control burns? And why do they have control burns? And do they have any kind of monitoring of the air on a controlled burn?
Okay, the question was about controlled burns. There's two agencies, actually, there's three agencies that control open burning in Hillsborough County. We have an agreement, we talk to each other, it's very well-coordinated. Department of Forestry handles whole agricultural burns, and the control burns, like we talked about, the wild areas, and that's to control fires. You have some here from Parks that can probably answer that in more detail and do a better job of it if you need that. Sometimes our agency issues about fifty, what we call open burn permits a year, and this is where somebody wants to come in, and they want a clear piece of land for one-time commercial development, before residential development. And we issue about fifty of those a year. We're very, very careful about the setbacks, types of burning that they can do, whether it be a pile or an ACI. We come out and do a site inspection. We also make sure that they post a sign, and that sign is there so that if you are affected by that anyway, and you have any concerns about it, you can call our office and we will respond. Generally, when it comes to open burning, it's safe, isn't it? So that's the second. The third type of burn would be ceremonial burns, and that would be the fire marshal, that's the sort of thing that they follow up on, or it may be a training exercise for the fire departments. But it's, the open burning is taken very seriously in this county. Yes, ma'am?
Can you address the smokestacks of the deco plant? I mean, if you're new to the area and you see that, you just want to run in that role of open, safe, safe, safe. Can you address it a little bit?
Yes, I talked, the question was about the smokestacks that you see at the Big Bend plant. I realize that when you're down in the South County area, if you're anywhere near Apollo Beach, they do, they're very, very noticeable on the landscape. What I can tell you is that Tampa Electric Company does burn, it's a coal-fired plant, they have put about a half a billion dollars into cleaning up that plant. Every one of those units is scrubbed for SO2. They're also, they have carbon absorption systems on there for the mercury and some of the metals. They've done a much better job on reducing the nitrogen oxide emissions. Their electrostatic precipitators have all been cleaned up with dust controls, and that is actually now a much, much cleaner plant than it was before. But your question is, is it safe? And the answer is yes. Do we still check on them, though? Absolutely. Every one of those stacks is tested for all risk galils once a year. They do it at their expense, but they notify us, we come out, we audit those. They have continuous emission monitors in the stacks that we have access to, so even on the date that they're not testing, or the date that we're not there, we can go out and we can check and see what the emissions were. So those plants are very, very carefully watched. I also mentioned that we're putting a brand-new monitoring station in Apollo Beach to upgrade what we've had there before, just so we have an ambient monitor sitting right in the neighborhood there and see what the residents are breathing. We believe it's safe, the modeling tells us it's safe, our inspections tell us it's safe, but we want the monitor here as well.
Before, okay, I saw a hand in the back. Yes, ma'am? Okay. All right, we had a lady here, and then the lady here, and then you. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. What about the groundwater away from the estuary from here, will say? What's that like?
The question was about the groundwater, and I guess the quality of it, and, you know, once you get back from the bay a little bit in the area around Mosaic. I work in the air quality group, but what I'll do is, I'll get your name and information after this meeting, and I'll make sure that you get an answer on that. We have some very knowledgeable water folks at our office, there are experts on it, they can get you an answer.
Okay, I'm going to your left.
Another TECO question. Are there any major anticipated negative impacts based on federal changes regulations against coal-fired plants that we should expect to affect the TECO plant within the next couple of years?
If you're talking about the current administration has said that they're going to...
And they could, you could make a bigger bridge, so these super liners could get in there, and they could say, "Well, we're going to move." But I can get you more answers. I'd like to say it's as simple as dredging out underneath the skyway so they can dip down when they go in, but I don't have an answer for you on that.
Well, that wasn't one of them. As a banker, can we think that they would raid, either raise it or do a new bridge? Was, you know, was that two billion or two point something billion?
You'd have to show me a return on investment for that before I would do it. There was, I see your hand. There was a proposal that at first was kind of chuckled at, maybe there's an exchange for the raids versus the cruise builders. I don't know what the answer is, but it's going to be a topic of discussion coming up here in the next years. I had a question over here, and it was, let me get to the question, I'm trying to take them in order. You had asked a question about a safety requirement on an ingress egress.
Right.
All right, and that's going to be a staff answer. At which intersection was it again, sir?
Well, intersection of mine, considering the number of the people here, one of the expensive, or the public safety shit, wildfire, or, it's more or less like a security, our end point of the first thing that I think of.
Yes, I'm doing the short straw. There are requirements based on the size of the development, the number of trips, how many access points you have to have to, in this case, three oh one, six seventy-four. And if you look at the zoning and build-out plan, there are going to be a number of ingress and egress points for the entire subdivision, meaning, which includes, I believe, even some of the commercial stuff, which is part of this property originally. So if you look at the plan, you have your entrance, you have off three oh one now, eventually you have entrances to Nineteenth Avenue, or Nineteenth Avenue to three oh one. There's a couple, at least one entrance down south, closer to the Walmart, just a little north of Walmart. And I think there's, will be an entrance on six seventy-four as well. So there actually are plans to be a number of access points.
As a, as a, right now.
The way the code is written, well, actually, well, the way the code is written is really about dispersment of traffic, meaning, you require a certain number of entrances and exits for the entire subdivision, based on how many trips are generated, meaning, which will help disperse... will help disperse the traffic or give people options to take different exits so that not everybody has to leave or enter by the same point. Fire Department, I know, looks at access, access, and to ensure that they can safely enter and leave, and they review all plans that are submitted by developers. And we were talking about the land development process earlier, the engineering part of it, and the fire department, the fire marshal is then gonna do a part of that, so they approve. I don't know what their specific criteria is, but I know they approve everything that's submitted.
All right, I saw a couple questions.
And we were talking about the cruise ships before. I would hate to see Hillsborough County lose any kind of revenue from if they had to move those cruise ships out. But I think there was one suggestion that there was land that Hillsborough had on the other side of the bridge, and they could develop a port of call in that area, and it would still be, you know, tax purposes for Hillsborough. Is that true?
I know there's land, but I would think Mr. Vinnick and his investors would not, if they end up buying the channel-side property, would not like to see that happen because, you know, they're, and I don't know anything about their internal projections, but they're banking on that cruise ship coming into here and seeing that whole area with a bigger entertainment facility and more hotel rooms. I will go ahead and take a cue and sit down, because I know there was other business. One thing that is obvious is that I can't escape quickly. So if you have questions, I'll hang out and be happy to follow up with you. I would like to, on behalf of all the residents here, like to thank you, Commissioner Higginbotham. Personally, coming out, but more than that, I'd like to thank each and every county employee who I think might be on our dollar tonight. Is that correct? That's right.
Zero dollar.
Oh, zero dollar. Oh, you can say as long as you want to. But I would personally like to thank you on behalf of all the residents here and those who are not here for your coming out tonight and supporting the commissioner, but more than that, supporting us and answers to our questions.